Alright, alright, alright. Ladies and gentlemen, let's get this town hall started. Thank you so much for coming. We're excited to see a wonderful turnout and to know that our colleagues, our social workers here in Texas are interested in wanting to do this work. My name is Kimberly Lawiston and I am one of the coordinators of this town hall. I just wanted to kind of give a little background on why we did this town hall and what our plans are for the future. We are planning to have an equity committee focused on social justice issues, specifically those of racism and ethnic groups being discriminated against here in the state of Texas. We do not want to have equity committee that combines everything because we do not want racism to be put in the backseat. So we do not want to talk about OGT. We do not want to talk about women's issues. We do not want to talk about immigration, although they are related. But we must first hit and talk about the elephant in the room. Most of these other isms would not be present if the racism is already established and dealt with. So, um, to get started, I would first like to introduce, um, our speakers and my partner in crime, Robin Harris. I'm not tired, I was just running back and forth a lot. So I'm like, checking my bed, trying to make it back in time. But before doing that, I'd like to just ask Robin Harris to come up, just to stand so you guys can see her. We've been working really hard within the last couple of months in our steering committee, coordinating and actually recruiting other members. Dr. Teasley, who is, um, if he can stand. Dr. Teasley, who is the dean of School of Social Work at University of Texas in San Antonio. We also have other members, Amy Brown, our executive director, Maryson Vaughn is also a big part of this, and we have others, but I don't see anybody else in the room. But, just to give you guys to know, this town hall, we need your participation. We are actually presenting to the NASW board tomorrow to present the proposal, all the work we've been doing, all the data we've been collecting. We didn't really do a lot of research on the issues because the research is already there, it's already been done. We're just trying to present that and back it up with our code of ethics. Our preamble, if you look at the flyer, the preamble to our code of ethics, it is our moral responsibility, not only as humans, but as social workers, to be the frontline of defense in terms of our clients who are being dealt the wrong hand in the systems that we work with. Okay? So, without further ado, just want to give you guys some background on our speakers. Joyce James, who is an LMSW AP, she is a powerhouse, not only in the state of Texas, but also in the country. She started as a CPS worker and became the assistant commissioner of the Texas, um, of the commissioner, yes, 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 good point. This is long, I'm not from Texas, so all these long titles and acronyms don't make sense to me half the time. I'm from Miami, so. But, um, but she was pivotal in doing great work, and she'll talk more about that. We also have Sandy Barnaby coming all the way from New York. Sandy, if you can stand, just thank you for coming. She misses the fall because we don't have seasons here, so thank you for coming to the hot summer. And we appreciate everything that she were doing in New York, and we know that Texas will also follow suit, our chapters together, and start a revolution across the country. So, without further ado, I just ask Ms. Joyce James and Sandy to just come up here and begin our town hall.
What about this?
Oh yeah, before that happens, because I know that we have this generational gap in technological, you know, knowledge. We want to make sure that everyone can actually participate. So this is a good time to actually have your phones out, because we have a way for you to ask questions live, to make things happen. We're using a great microphone line, I'm getting one as well.
Alright, good afternoon, everyone. I'm glad to be here and I'm glad that you are all here as well. To make this discussion a little bit more interesting, we're going to participate in an interactive discussion. And everyone, please pull out your phones or your tablets, if you already have it out. And the website is here on the top, www.slydo.com. And when you get to that page, this is what you should see. Uh, I'm sorry, you'll see, uh, a little, um, I'm sorry.
Interest box.
Uh, interest box, and please type in the code REAL. And, yes, REAL, it's not cases. So once you guys get there, go ahead and, uh...
Is it hashtag real or just real?
It's just REAL. It should already be a hashtag in the section, so just type in REAL. I'm gonna give you all just a couple seconds to do that. Okay, next, this information will be taking to, uh, we want to present this information to the executive board tomorrow. So if you can all participate in our first poll, it will also be a practice poll, so just to make sure that everybody, uh, mobile device is working, just go ahead and participate then. Can you slide it up, please? Okay. Alright, thank you, it looks like it's working. They are participating. And then, I'm sorry, I'm just, I want, I want to just make sure I'm clear.
REAL, racial equity accountability and leadership development.
Get real.
Get real.
Okay. We're gonna have a slide, once I sit down, I'm going to have another section come up, and it's gonna have questions that you can, you can ask.
You'll see questions on the tab on your left, right next to the poll tab. Okay, so hit questions, type in your questions.
Okay, and how it's gonna work, if you type on the questions, you can type in your questions, and then everyone, there's gonna be a thumbs up button, and we're gonna rank the questions by order of popularity. And so, just make sure that you can answer your own question, and you can also vote on other questions. And when we open up for discussion, we're going to, um, just go by popularity and order. Okay, any questions? Alright, great.
Good afternoon. Do I need the mic? Alright, great. I'm so excited that all of you have come to the town hall meeting. I'm Joyce James, and I don't want to spend a lot of time talking about who I am, but I do want to share with you that I'm a social worker, and I have been for 36 years. And I started my career as a frontline child protective services caseworker. And looking back and understanding racism and how it manifests in systems, I didn't know it at the time, but from my very first day on the job, racism was evident. And so, I made a lot of mistakes because I didn't have the space that I needed to really understand racism. I wasn't given the professional development that I think social workers need to have to interrupt racism. And so, looking back, I can own the mistakes that I made as a caseworker. I felt it, but I didn't know what to do with what I was feeling. And so, I put kids in a lot of placements where I never would have wanted my own children to be. But the system allowed it to happen because those facilities were licensed by the state of Texas. And so, I wasn't asked what I thought about, where I was placing kids, and I didn't feel like I could complain. And so, I contributed to the disparate outcomes that a lot of children had, and in ways that I did not choose my profession. We come here to help and not to hurt, right? And so, we think that we are way past the time for social workers to get a sense of our power in the systems and institutions that we work in. And the mere fact that we are in all of these systems and institutions that produce the same disparate outcomes for the same population of people has to tell us that it's more than about individuals, right? And so, if we look at these issues as being a result of what's wrong with individuals, what's wrong with certain populations of people, what's wrong with the communities that they live in, then we continue to contribute to and sustain institutional and structural racism. And I did that for a very long time. And then I immersed myself in some undoing racism workshops that helped me to really understand what racism does, how it came to be, and how it continues to manifest in our systems and institutions today. So understanding the historical context of that has really helped to put me on a journey, and I'm still on it. I'm on a journey to undoing racism. But I had to pick up a lot of information along the way. I had to be in relationship with other people who had a common understanding of how racism lives and breeds in the institutions that we all work in. And so, today is really about creating what we call and hope to create, a liberated space, to say we can no longer be silent. I got to a point where I realized I could no longer be silent. And when I was willing to no longer be silent, believe me, there are a lot of other people just waiting for someone to be the one to open the door and create the space that we can come into, so that together we can organize in ways that will help us to undo racism. It's not enough for social workers to know the data and the outcomes and to say, oh, that's racism. That's not enough to point to it and say that's racism. We have to find ways to understand at a deeper level the why of racism, and then the what we can do collectively to interrupt and undo racism in the places where we work. And so, we, I don't want to spend a whole lot of time talking, I have invited Sandy to come from New York, because they're doing a lot of work with social workers in New York City. I've had the opportunity to, to go to New York and do presentations and be there with them. The last thing I want to say before I turn it over to her is that there is evidence in the state of Texas, and I hope you all know the story, but there is evidence in the state of Texas that when we are intentional and deliberate about understanding racism, about putting into place anti-racist principles and practice, that we began to get the outcomes that we desire. And when we are no longer intentional and deliberate about having these practices in place, the system is designed such that it resorts back to its old way of doing business. And so, we have been at a place in Texas where we were on a journey to undoing racism, not only in child welfare, but in other systems and institutions that touch the lives of the same vulnerable population. And when we let go of that, we see the system go back to its old way of doing business. And so, we want to regain our power around those things. So I want to turn it over to Sandy and have her share with you who she is and what has brought her to this work as a white social worker, and I think she has an important story to tell.
Thank you, Joyce. Yeah, I do want to tell my story because, um, like, I always looked this way. I always looked this way. But what has happened to me is I've been gutted out, transformed, put it back in, and so I look this way, but I don't think this way, if you know what I mean. And something profound has happened in my life, and I want to share that with you. The first time, okay, I was already like 40 years old, I'm like 64 now. I was 40 years old and I was the executive director of Accounts on Alcoholism and Drug Dependence in New York. And a friend of mine said, Sandy, we found this amazing, amazing training experience. Give me $250 in two and a half days of your life, you'll never be the same. At that time, I was the executive director, we had a chemical dependency training program, we were training people to work with addiction, and I said, sure. And out of my respect for my friend Phyllis Frank, I did this training. And myself and other social workers sat for two and a half days with some extraordinary people, these are from the People's Institute for Survival and Beyond, they're out of New Orleans. And I heard things I had never heard before, I saw things that I never saw before, and things started popping, and I started connecting the dots. And myself and our, my colleagues were shaking our head, how the hell did we graduate from the schools of social work and were expected to work with human beings and not have this And I thought to myself, when I had graduated from the School of Social Work, I got, I found a full-time job and I needed more money, so I worked part-time as somebody who would go into the homes and assess for foster care placement, kindergarteners. At that time, I was 28 years old, and I was told to go into four square miles of Mount Vernon, New York, which is four square miles of black families. Now, in the schools of social work, I took cultural competence with the Latinos, cultural competence with the deaf community, cultural competence with the gay and lesbian community. I was culturally competent. And like they say in the People's Institute, unless you deal with your racism, all the skills and tools will, you'll end up being a skillful racist. After that workshop, I reflected back on the decisions that I made for the families that were expecting to have kin placed in their home, community members placed in their home. And this well-intended white social worker with that degree and that certification went in and made judgments that after the Undoing Racism Workshop, I wept. I kept families apart. Why? I had a checklist of how many bedrooms there needed to be, was there any history of drinking? I mean, really, my family, they're drinking constantly, constantly drinking, they all did, they was drinking in the family, there was all, I wept. Because it wasn't until I did the Undoing Racism Workshop that I realized that white culture was the only culture associated with power. And I had no competence around white culture. Ron Chisholm said, he's founder of the People's Institute, he said to me, hey, listen, all I want is for my, he's a black man, all I want is for my daughter to have what your daughter has, equity without minority status. That stuff just started changing my life, I started thinking differently. You know, all that, all of those questions about, like, what has to happen to these people to get them to do, get them to do, get them to do, and it was like, oh my God, the problem's not there, the problem was here. I didn't know what to do. And they said, don't do anything, because the last thing we need is some confused white woman out there. Don't do anything, just quiet down and learn. And I morphed into an organizer. And myself and other social workers said, it is unconscionable that there's not one profession in this United States that demands its professionals to understand racism, what it is, and the impact that it has on human beings in the citizenry. And we said, we're gonna be that profession. And so, we started to organize in the schools of social work, and we were really, really gaining momentum, we were having faculty, you see, the schools of social work, the faculty admitted that they were not prepared to prepare. They were bold enough to admit, were not prepared to prepare. And they started coming through, and students started coming through, and then they got scared, and they jumped from undoing racism to anti-oppression, like that. And after all those years of organizing, they went on anti-oppression, which was basically patriarchy, right? Anti-oppression, the whole world is anti-oppressive, right? Sexism, ableism, and we kept saying, no, 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 we gotta lead with race. Because in the Undoing Racism Workshop, we understood, and I'm gonna wrap it up so we can start asking questions, we understood that by 1776, when that document was signed, every, every institution had already been established by our founding fathers and mothers for themselves and their beneficiaries, and so embedding every institution was this bias. And so, today, those institutions do what they were designed to do. And then it was like, oh, now I understand it, now I understand, we all understand why every institution will benefit whites more than any other race group, because they were designed that way. And now, change in them is, is a struggle, but that's what we're up to. Undoing racism doesn't have to do with individual acts of bigotry, it has to do with something much bigger than that. The belief that we are architects, we, social workers, are architects of the new institutions that we will lead, and that we will lead with our full humanity intact, we will lead with the deep dive analysis offered by the People's Institute, I mean, we are led by that, and that we will be the architects. And that when we take over the institutions, and Joyce James models that, when she took over the institutions, we saw that return of humanity, we saw the data start to dip down, and disproportionate outcomes started to drop, and all children started to be treated like they deserved to be at home with their parents, and all people started to be treated with some equity, and then we all felt hope and we celebrated, and a movement has started. And of course, the People's Institute has been around for 40 years, they've trained hundreds of thousands of people, but we are so grateful that they hung out and they hung in long enough to still be with us today. Because to regain your sense of humanity with some clarity and a deep analysis guided by principles, and to know that we can talk fluently about racism and not be afraid, but to be bold, and to be strong, and to be clear, is like the greatest way to live, just the greatest way to live, and we wish this for everybody here, and we're asking NASW, by the way, I'm the past president of the New York City chapter, and we are doing this. We're offering CE, we have a Race Equity Track, we are doing this. Because we were strategic, and the current president is also part of the Anti-Racist Alliance, and we're asking Texas to come on board, and that's why we're here to have this town hall with a request at the end, to really support your chapter in taking leadership in Undoing Racism in Texas. Whoa, that's a big job. That's a big job. This day is immense, this day is enormous, okay? So let us begin with the town hall, okay?
Kimberly, are you taking over?
Alright, uh, before we get started, let me go ahead and switch it up a little bit. I wanted to, um, I wanted to go ahead and ask another poll, because this is important for our presentation for the board tomorrow. Do you feel that you are equipped to be a change agent in undoing institutional racism? And please explain why or why not. Okay, so that's gonna, that poll's gonna be open, and you can switch back to questions if you want to, but, um, I'm gonna go ahead and switch back over.
This is the first tech town hall I've ever been to. Thank you. Ideally, if we had had a much longer period of time, what we would like to hear is the real-life voices and questions of the people in the room, but to make the best use of the time we have, we really appreciate the young ladies and their technological savvy, which I don't have.
Alright, so each way the discussion is gonna go, we're gonna spend about five minutes on each question, five to 10 minutes, narrow rate, we've got about 20 questions altogether. But, um, the first question, I'm gonna leave it to Ms. Joyce or Ms. Sandy, you can chime in. What exactly will the new committee do once?
We're gonna undo racism. Or at least begin to prepare our profession to begin that journey. And so, as Kimberly mentioned, um, we have a proposal that we will be presenting to the executive board on tomorrow, and it involves various steps, and we don't want it to be that we have prescribed it, but we want the committee to be formed, and then we want to seek the input of other chapters and other social workers. But the bottom line is, we believe that it is really important to take a stand against racism. And in order to do that, you know, we need to be speaking about it, we need to be deliberate and intentional about calling it out, and, and we need to be preparing the profession to interrupt racism in the systems and institutions where we work. And so, that's the general operation of the committee. We also want to seek to have some involvement with the schools of social work around curriculum, how we train and prepare our social workers to go to work in institutions where we primarily serve, poor communities and communities of color. And so, if we're not equipped, then we risk keeping racism in place. Do you want to add anything?
Yeah, and the important thing is consistency, because racism thrives on confusion. If you have an opinion that you just developed out of your life experience, and you have another, and you have another, we can't get to root cause. And that's why that workshop made such an enormous difference, because we finally understood the historical context, that this country was built on the construct of race. Because if it hadn't added race, we would have been the same as Canada, Mexico, France, and we're not, we're a race-constructed society, and everything can be analyzed through that race lens, in fact, everything is. And so, we want to be sure that we lead with race, and then through that lens, you look at all other oppressions, that's fine, because we're a race-constructed society, and we're hoping that this common analysis, common definition, common language, is what actually has helped us to become fluent and become, be able to do something. And Joyce James will tell you that in the state of Texas, there were thousands of people that had to go through a process of re-education, so that we could all be on the same page. And when somebody was confused, there was an education that you could go back to that would be consistent. Every discipline has the canons, the policy one and two, behavior one and two, the constitution. On race, it can be anything? No, it can't be anything, it has to be something very specific. This, you want to undo racism 101, is we have to be on the same, on the same page.
Alright, uh, we're gonna, this is a town hall, so we're gonna open up to a few people, we have a couple more minutes. What do you think that our steering committee should do? What, what issues would you like to see the board, um, discuss?
It's not a poll, it's just letting some general ideas out, so you can go ahead and raise your hand.
Anybody?
Or stand.
Yeah, well, I think what, like what she said earlier, it can give us some basic education, you know, I've, I've never thought about the constitutional document being developed for only the white community. I've always thought of that document as it pertaining to me, as a movement, as a minority. So when you said that, that kind of upset me.
Sorry.
So I would like, so that requires us to have some education, to be change agents, we have to understand what that means, because sometimes, like you, that lady who there said, racism can sometimes breed itself, be just as racist to other groups, you know, ourselves, and with each other. And I think that what she said is pivotal, some, some basic 101 education for me, even though I feel like I'm very prolific in understanding racism, political change, that, took all those classes that you talked about. But when you said that, that, oh, I didn't, that really, a bow would be.
Well, it's about getting to the truth. And so, we get to the truth by coming together and understanding the impact that racism has had on all of us. And so, when we understand that, then we're in a position to have some collective organizing effort to interrupt and ultimately undo racism. I'd like to see the board, once you, once training is implemented, and you have a number of people who are...
and we have a number of people who are qualified and equipped, and to go out into the community, go to the churches, go to the museums, and be able to then train others so that we can start the dialogue.
There was a hand over here.
Yes. I think a very important observation I've made is that there are so many of us interested in this. Look at the small room we got.
Yes.
I think the board needs to open itself up for more of this type of discussions, maybe workshop sessions that will deal with that issue. But I think the fact that it's crowded says a lot. It should be made obvious to the board. Yeah, more time. One more?
I want to see a lot of direct advocacy to our elected officials so that we can get them on our side in understanding that institutional racism is an issue so that that can carry itself through local, state, and federal houses in politics.
I'm very happy, because the steering committee, that we do have everything that you guys said is on our proposal.
It is.
Every single one of them. And one thing that we wanna make you guys aware of for the next year, even if this committee's not, we're still doing its work. The next year, we're trying to fix us first. We do wanna go train other professionals. We do wanna go out there. But in order to be effective, in order to facilitate that dialogue, in order to train them properly, we have a cleanup house.
We have to understand racism first before we can go out and talk to other people about undoing racism. And so, yes, all of this is in the proposal. And it's exciting to hear you echo some of the things that we have already discussed and put in the proposal.
All right. Our next question. With respect to social workers' quest for justice, how do we convince our fellow social workers who may not see institutionalized racism as an issue?
She was right. I wanna tell you the story of what happened yesterday. It was like the best conversation. I'm gonna share the conversation. I'm waiting for my bus to take to the airport to get here. And this nice woman and her daughter from North Carolina chatting away. And somehow, we got to the killing that happened in Charlotte. And we were talking about it. She goes, "The only thing I don't go for is that black lives matter. All lives matter." I said, "Really?" I said to her, and then I said to her, I said, "Hey, would you like to wake up black tomorrow morning right where you live?" She said, "Hell, no." And I said to her, listen to this. I said, "Until you say, 'Hell, yeah,' and black people and white people are treated the same, black lives matter." And guess what? She was silenced, and she walked away. And I said to her, "Please, please, please, when you get back home, let your friends and family know about this conversation." She said, "Okay." You really just need to ask, would you be willing to change? If you're white, would you be willing to be black tomorrow? And just like willingly accept that life and the way institutions treat you? And his answer is, "Yes." Walk away from that person, because they are deluded, and it is hopeless. Most people will say, "We understand the outcomes. We understand the difference." And then there's always the data that will show that the outcomes is different.
And I always say that a way to start the conversation is through the data. So just putting it out there, because it really does tell the story. And ask people why they think the way it is. That is a way to begin the conversation. And especially when you can show data that indicates that the outcomes are the same for the same population of people in every system and institution. So I say, we either have to believe that there's something inherently wrong with the people as a people, or we have to be willing to examine institutional and structural racism as the underlying cause of these issues. And you know, one of the biggest challenges that we have, one of the biggest challenges that we have as social workers is the willingness to take the risk to have conversations about race and racism with people who are not yet at that place where they wanna have the conversation. So it's easy for us to be in a room with people who wanna have the conversation. But the challenge is, and that's what the question is, the challenge is to go out and have that conversation with people who we know are resistant to it. Part of the work that we hope to do through the committee is to equip people with knowledge and information about what are ways in which we can interrupt racism. Because how many times have you heard racist comments, yet people don't feel like they are equipped to even say anything? And to come to understand that silence means consent, and to really begin to figure out ways to, that we can interrupt racism. And we hope to be able to do that type of education through the committee.
Earlier today, Joyce reminded us that there's a great sociologist by the name of Eduardo Badea Silva, who wrote Racism Without Racists. And that's an important book, because he did a huge study of college students across this country. And the survey showed ways in which new thinking, new paradigm of thinking happened after the post-racial society of the 60s, where it went underground. And we became really smart at trying to be good people and to understand how things are. So one of the things that we wanted to do is to really develop a continuing education course around interrupting colorblindness. For us to be able to see it when we hear it, and be able to interrupt it with some facts. But first things first. First, let's get to undo racism. Let's get that common education. And then we can begin to develop these layered sophisticated interventions.
What do you guys think? You know, anybody got any input on how we can educate our social workers about institutional racism?
Being an educator, I think it's something I have been through, have been through under racism several times.
Yes.
I think it's critical that schools of social work begin embracing certain trainings that make people uncomfortable, whether that's your colleagues or your peers that you're working with that we expose it rooted in data. Because a lot of times, that culture doesn't receive it unless you have facts to back it up. And the data is the data. And it shows that it exists. So that we can begin having the conversations with that, so that we can be equipped with certain terminology that we have the same language.
We have to be willing to be uncomfortable, because being the well-meaning and well-intentioned people that we are, if it were easy to have a conversation about undoing racism, we would already be doing that. So we have to willingly accept the struggle and commit ourselves to really having a more bold and courageous conversation on these issues.
Just a technical thing, the active poll closed. Thank you. Any other comments?
Any other comments? I wanna...
Let's start here. We'll come to you.
I just wanna add that. I think that we need to find a way. Someone that may have a different mindset is important to understand that language. So evidence-based practice is the latest buzz. I think it's called something else years ago. I think, basically, you're saying data, essentially, is the same thing. But I think we need to use the language in whatever area that we're trying to between the people, communities, and maybe becoming fluent in that language.
And to understand that my truths may not necessarily be yours, but it doesn't make it any less true. And so to be open to that is to really begin to then kinda get our, what we call our boxes, closer together in understanding that racism may impact us in different ways.
I wanna echo your comment about the courage that it takes to be uncomfortable. And I probably had a tear up. Years ago, in past life, I was very active at the national level with NASW. And I was on the National Board. I went to some delegate assemblies. And we went through a few years in there where we had some encounters at board meetings and some things that happened in delegate assemblies that were, all had to do with race. And here you had the NASW leadership of the country really, really struggling, and people accusing other people of all sorts of motivations and racism, and chalking, and I don't know, chalking some things up to racism, that there were disagreements about, are they or are they not? And feeling personally attacked myself. And as a white woman, how do I defend myself when I'm attacked by a black woman on the board? Who, you know, and it was disorienting for me. I mean, I did it. I spoke up for myself after a while. But I lost track of like two and a half hours of time, which has never happened before, because it upset me so blasted much. And other people, and the other white people in the room said not one word, because they were scared. And they came up to me later and said, "Oh, I'm so glad you said that." And it's like, why did you leave me there by myself, feeling devastated? And it upsets me to think of it to this day, because it... And so we ourselves, we've struggled with this forever. And so I'm glad to be in the room.
I just wanna say, thank you for sharing that. Yes, all boards need to do this. They have to become on board. But the experience that you had, I've come to understand, is daily for people of color.
Yeah.
And so you took it, and you had an experience. You know, you grew from it to understand that that is a pattern in practice of daily life, microaggressions, macroaggressions. And so when it happens to us, we become very flustered, because we're not used to it. But it really takes a lot to just take a breath and take the hit, and to understand that this is what it feels like.
All right. I'll open the poll back up towards the end of discussion. But we're just gonna work on the questions from here. All right. So anybody else?
Was there any comment around that? Do we have a few more minutes?
Yes, ma'am.
In honor to start working on erasing hundreds and hundreds of years of racism, we need to also find out a way we can spread it in the schools, countries, with the kids that are coming up. Because they don't know racism is a talk, is a talk, yeah?
And it permeates in the education system, just like in every other system and institution. It's everywhere.
What I'd like to say, kind of to talk about, you know, thank you so much for sharing that, that experience. Can you guys hear me well? A sleep-ish problem.
You have some voice.
Yes. All right. Well, I wanted to say something that's very, very important to say. Racism, we know that our country was founded on that. And it's not only something that the oppressor population, like we like to define, is doing. The oppressed is also contributing to that. And I know that's one of the questions I think someone has, so we're gonna talk more about that later.
All right.
Maybe we should just go to that question.
Oh, yeah. That is the next question. Is there something as reverse racism? Can minorities be racist?
And maybe, you know, you all should be thinking about what you think about that as well. My response to that is that the definition of racism is race prejudice plus power.
Oh, so...
The power to change systems and institutions. And so what does that say to us in regard to that question?
Nope.
So you can be racist in thought, but not in practice?
You, we can have prejudice. We can discriminate. We all do that. But the power of racism is such that it operates out of the ability to change systems and institutions.
It operates outside of the individual. What do you guys think about that?
Well, that's to say that racism needs a place and a space to operate. So what we see from the mass media, we wanna make you think that you're racist, you see, or not. But there's a thing called racial and spatial regulation. Where we rate, where we put people in spaces because of race. The whole red line of communities, the communities that we're seeing in Ferguson, Chicago, and...
Can you get the mic off?
Okay. The whole thing that we're seeing, I'm not surprised at anything we're seeing. Because if we look at even the great migration, where blacks were put into certain areas. So we saw that they were put into the South Side of Chicago. We saw what's going on in Missouri, where they ended up in Ferguson. And my hometown of Cincinnati, Ohio. We could go throughout the country. And so when you regulate people into spatial regulation, and then you over-police them, and they're standing on a corner selling cigarettes because there's no jobs. We trained people in the 60s for jobs that we were sending overseas at the same time. This is how poverty operates. So within these areas of regulating people, over-policing them, you're seeing these exacerbated things happen. And that's really what's happening in our society right now. And that's not just about an individual. Because structural inequalities means that things are enacted on the society and people within the community context. And they're responding to them. So how do people respond when there are no jobs? They rob, kill, steal, and cheat. And racism makes us think that that's just black people or brown people doing that. All people would do that. Okay? And so this was what, this would happen to the white community in the same way. We have testimony about that in the 30s and 40s, or back to the Civil War, when the Irish were done this way. So it's a similar thing. So my main point is that we get to the question that someone posed here. You know, can we be racist? Yes, we can be biased and prejudiced in our own thoughts. But racism has a place and a space that it operates. And that's what's going on. And that's what... And it's racial common sense thinking when we think it belongs to just a black or brown, or brothers and sisters. It belongs to all of us.
Can minorities be racist? Does it need truth?
Yeah. And I was just gonna say, another plug for the Undoing Racism Workshop is, we could have a much deeper conversation about how racism impacts all of us. But there would be a lot of information that needs to be shared leading up to that discussion that is kind of out of order for us to save without building on it in the ways that the People's Institute would do. And so I would just encourage you to think about the definition of racism according to the People's Institute. Again, it's race prejudice plus power. And it's the power to change systems and institutions. So keep that in mind. It won't reach.
Um, I don't know if I need the mic. But I did wanna just say that it also, in response to that question, also helps to understand racism as being based on a social construct to dictate who gets what.
Yes.
And that power aspect of that is that there is a group that has the power to dictate who gets what, based on appearance and all the other issues that come from that.
Yes.
So understanding that this is a social construct that has to be dismantled will definitely help us get rid of racism and all the other issues.
That's great. Thank you. You must have been to the workshop.
Any more comments? Anyone?
I'd like to bring up another issue. I'm hoping that the next Congress, whoever gets elected, can reinstitute the fairness doctrine so bigoted people who look like me will not dominate the airways and put people down that are of other races and socioeconomic classes that are below them.
Thank you. That was another hand somewhere?
Yes.
I'm just gonna say, you know, everybody politically, it's probably not as we do, but vote for them, correct? Move that front. Move that forward. We do not need to go backwards. You know, one thing I learned in sociology, what I want when I was in graduate school is, he who has the money has power. So we gotta get, we do not need to let Trump have any more power. If all the people have the money, more money. We've got to change that. We've got to maintain the movement. Anything we have, you know, been able to accomplish through a lot of this administration, we have got to go forward with that politically. One thing that's so important, our politics are beautiful.
We have one right here. Then we'll hold on again.
All right. I was just, the minority racism kind of thing is, for those who can't see me, I'm white. You know, for me, when I hear a white person kind of coming back with that, the first thing that goes through my head is, while you're projecting some shame and guilt that you have of your own racism and maybe your own inability to step in when maybe you felt like you should have. And a lot of times, in my organization, when I have counselors, staff come to me and are having that racism kind of conversation, and they are suggesting that the minority client is being difficult because they're racist against their white counselor, that's kind of my first conversation starter with them about, okay, yes, the power piece, but also what are you projecting and transferring onto that situation that is your own issues that you need to start kind of address? what are you projecting and transferring onto that situation that is your own issues that you need to start kind of addressing?
Sometimes we reach what they call that growing edge. You know, we get, we get confronted with something that gives us trouble. And so we, we, we try to reverse it and say that it's not about me, it's about you. And so we have to consider, uh, maybe just pausing for a minute when we get to that point. And listening and being open to the other person's experience in a way that might allow us to grow as well.
Sometimes moving to another ism helps to clarify, you know, it would be similar to a woman saying to a man, you know, like, this is really sexist in the sexist system. And then he says, you're sexist. Right? You may have internalized a lot of sexism, but there's no power for this woman to change that balance. Right? So we see sexism as, we can understand that, that she, women do not have right now the power to change all of the institutions for equity. We're still fighting for that. The patriarchy still has a construct that is still operating. And so a woman technically could not be sexist, although she could internalize sexism. And she could perpetrate sexism, right? I mean, she could feel the, the oppression of sexism. But she herself could not be sexist because she doesn't have the power behind.
All right, our next question.
I'm out of time. I'm military, so.
All right, uh, this question changed like in two minutes. So now this is our top question. How do we get through to those who seem to believe racism does not exist?
I was just gonna ask the audience, so.
Yeah.
Just to give a general thing, we all, as social workers, we know, we are trying to recognize our own bias as social workers. Unfortunately, our countrymen and our fellow colleagues in different professions, or even those still in our own profession, do not know how to recognize their implicit bias. I don't think we can do anything to do this. That person has to be at that place of change. We all know about the, the cycle of change. They have to be at that place willing to let go of that fear. They have to be doing that. Social media is already doing a good job. I think social media is gonna make this happen quicker. And I'm hoping within my child or my child's generation, this country could be getting changed for the better in every way. But.
Go ahead, right there.
Yes, Lisa.
Oh, um, uh, that poll of, of another question and a couple of things that Sandy you said. Yeah, no, this is, this is, uh, you, you explain, you gave an analogy with sexism. And I've heard a couple of things you've said today that suggest that intersectionality is not necessarily useful right now. But I'm wondering if it could be useful in this, um, this effort.
Well, I think we've come much further along in having discussions about and, um, understanding the other isms. Being more willing, more open to accepting that other isms exist. But what we need to understand is that when you add race to any ism, it takes on a different meaning. And, and then that it, it puts that imbalance of power in place. So even as we look at women's issues around sexism, when you add race to that, there is a clear difference between how sexism impacts women of color and how it impacts white women. And so, you know, we, having a conversation about racism, uh, requires a willingness to be bold and courageous, to be vulnerable, to be open to examining old attitudes and assumptions. To be willing to let go of some of the things we have believed to be true about people from the early years of socialization, which begins around the age of two or three years old. And so there are commonly held beliefs that we have about race and racism. And about why certain people are in the situation that they're in, that we attribute solely to the individual. And so we deny racism in many instances because we have been socialized to believe that what is wrong and broken is about what's broken about the person or the individual. We have not come to understand in the social work profession, the brokenness of our systems and institutions. And using the data to drive that conversation will further develop our lens so that we can see the brokenness of systems and see how racism historically and still today manifests in, in ways that keep these outcomes in place for the same population of people. And so, you know, we'll come to accept racism when we understand that it's not about who is racist. See, we deny racism because we look at it at an individual level and none of us wanna be associated with being a racist. And so once we come to have that collective understanding, again, not of whose racist, but about what racism has done to all of us, then we will no longer fear the conversation and the belief that racism exists.
We have a woman, uh, in and out of the screen, sorry. I had to guess.
In the green.
In the green.
I just wanna mention, and you briefly talked about it. I, I think personally, trying to make somebody believe or give, you know, you, you have to understand me. We, I have personally gotten to a point where I'm way past that. And I think interpsychically, as a, as a black woman and as a black person, that is, that plays on my psyche. As far as explaining that and further leads to that internal racism that's, I'm, I have a deficit of some sort. And I have to explain my deficit to you. And I'm very happy for the millennials, because they're quite different than we are. They, they're tired of it. You know, we know the name of the game. He's gonna hit him, he, he, they're gonna shoot him. They're gonna get acquitted.
Right.
We're gonna protest. We've tried that before. But, but I, I, I stray, but I, I want to speak to the interpsychic, that type of thing that goes on. I'm not speaking for anybody else, but that interpsychic thing that goes in between me. I have to explain to you yet, once, once again, I have to put myself down to say, you have to understand me. Once again, I belittle myself. I, I, I made myself small in that speech that, you know, we're, our greatest fears that were powerful beyond our belief. So I'm making myself small, doing does this world no good whatsoever. So I just wanted to speak to that.
Well, and the other thing is the need to feel like you have to silence yourself to protect those who don't believe.
Yeah.
Oh, boy.
That's a struggle that people deal with on a daily basis. And so being silent doesn't help us. We have to find the courage to speak our truth. And on the other side, we have to find the courage to learn to examine and be open to new truths that may not be our truth, but it doesn't make it any less the truth of people who are experiencing racism on a daily basis.
Start, you have your hand up.
So, um, I'm just overwhelmed. I'm very privileged. I thank my social work education for making me aware of that. But I have to get away from the emotion for a minute because it's something that someone said and they mentioned data. And I think we have an opportunity here to use our skills to bring some concrete foundations to this movement by doing more research. Like, we have a lot of opportunities to go out and do some really good data collection with the police officers, with the different systems, with ourselves, to put together some, some evidence-based tools that we can use to say, look, this is black and white, it's here. You can ignore it or you can accept it. And, uh, my personal change came from being confronted and being willing to give up my, uh, traditional stance that I've grown up with. So I, I think we have to, you know, I get all these calls to actions from NASW. They need to be about race. I mean, we need to start.
Yes.
Waking people up and saying, and making people choose, am I gonna push the red button? Or am I gonna let it go? And we need to say, okay, are we getting enough people pushing the button and standing up to this or not?
You know, I, I wanna say something on behalf of NASW, um, as a former president. Back when Trayvon Martin was murdered, we were so crazy that we were like, this has to end. You know, the org-, the anti-racist organizers that I worked with. And we put together a petition. And we petitioned NASW to mobilize the profession and prepare them to undo structural racism. And we got over a thousand people to sign this petition. We brought it to then CEO, um, Betsy Clark. And she asked us, you know, well, what do you want us to do? And we turned around and we said, well, what are you going to do? Right? You're the head of NASW. She said, I'll tell you what we'll do. We'll offer a webinar nationally and you can pick the speaker. And Joyce James did that webinar. All things are not equal. And then she said, we will hold a think tank. So back in 2013, we organized a think tank and sixty-five racial equity experts from around the country came together. People's Institute was there. And we had this wonderful experience of envisioning the work of the profession. And a document was, was put in place. And then we had a, uh, a Capitol Hill briefing. Okay, so there are documents. But what it requires are champions, long distant runners who never, ever, ever stopped pushing. And, um, that's us. So NASW has the spirit, you remember when Barack Obama said, make me do it? Organize, call, call me to do it. Don't just expect power to do it. They're not gonna do it. But NASW, I believe, has the will and the passion and has the commitment. I really do believe it. We have a CEO who's an African American. He has, has been very open to the idea of it. And then we became derailed. But if the call is there and if we are organized, I do believe that NASW will be the association that will bring our profession forward. And that's why I'm here and that's why we're here.
Well, and there is no other profession who has the capacity to do it. You know, what other profession is in every one of these systems and institutions? It's us. And we have been historically the people who have brought about much change in this country. So when we know our history, we know the power that we have to bring about change.
I think that's a perfect segue for the next question from Supername. Um, she says, there are a lot of different organizations for me to stand up for racism. What makes this one different or more?
I think I just answered that question.
Look, I'm a history official. We started as communities. We started as community organizers.
Right.
We started as advocates. If you know many of our champions in our history, we played a pivotal role on key federal legislation.
There you go.
After the Great Depression. That was a social worker that provided that plan. We've done many things, but I'm not saying clinical's not bad, but clinical alone, we need, we need to, we need both roles. We can't just be clinicians. We need to be on street.
All right, next question. Uh, how will committee members be selected?
By signing this. Once you sign this, we will let you know exactly what goes down to in tomorrow's morning. And we'll send out applications from there. We're trying to get representatives from all over the state of Texas. We are in Austin. It's gonna be hard for us to do things in El Paso. Hard for us to do things in, like, I don't know all the other places, Texas, Houston. I can't do everything, but we need people who can understand our communities for us to come together as steering committees. The steering committee will be doing everything, planning everything that we can do across the state to train our.
With input from all the chapters across the state.
Input from all the chapters, but in form, we can get input from everyone. We need leaders already there as our points of contact. So if you may already sign this, I'm gonna pass it around. Sign it.
Next question. Uh, what role can non-traditional social workers play from a macro level in this issue?
This issue requires collective commitment and action. We need to organize, not just among ourselves, but we need to be accountable to the communities that we work in and to organize. When our clients say, no, the cert-, you know, like Joyce said, how do we know we're doing a great job? Are we the people who should, who determine that? It's when our, our clients, from the communities we work with, right? So the community partnership piece is absolutely essential in Undoing Racism. So is there the role for the non-traditional social worker, the parent advocates, the students, the, the organizers, that we have to come together? And for us to not have this hierarchy where we have the, the clinicians, the licensed, the non-licensed, the BSW, we have to organize together. And all of those differentials and labels or whatever are really meaningless when it comes to Undoing Racism. In fact, I used to have all of these credentials and that. As I really became anti-racist, I started getting rid of them. Because you realize that that's a use of power. And it's like a cover. And the most anti-racism about your human mental, all my little degrees.
So what do you guys think? So do we have some non-traditional social workers in the room?
Yes. People who are not working in a clinical sense.
Not in a clinical.
Clinical has basically become the new social worker. People who are not working in clinical sense. I'm not saying that that's only your role, but that's, that's, I think.
So what's your role? And I say, what's your role in, in, and they say, in this issue, but I say, in Undoing Racism. What's your role? Right here and then in the back.
Yellow black.
Man, with a pin like this?
Well, I was just saying that I'm in a non-traditional social work setting. I, I work for the city. I work in the court. So, I mean, right there, working with the criminal justice, the, the juvenile justice field is incredible. I mean, halfway to see.
Yeah. How do we analyze what we see and tie it to racism? That's one of the things that we have to do. We have to have an analysis about racism and how it actually operates in our systems and institutions. In regard to juveniles, for example, young people who commit the same crime has a different response from systems that is predictable by race.
Yes.
There was a, over here.
Um, the, I, I think the infiltration of the institutions, the committees, the boards that we could turn around and sit on, if that would be a training program to where we, that's, people with like minds sitting on those would change those institutions. And I'd do that today.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Yes.
Um, I'm still stupid, but that's kind of the focus that I wanna think of. What role does economics play in racism and how can this help that, um, that system? And how do you close that wealth gap, which has made a huge inequality, um, and the effect of racism even more appear? And so I think that is one of the biggest, one of the biggest roles is how money, I think somebody said earlier, how money plays, um, money equals power. And how do you close the gap so that people have equal access to those resources?
That's great. I, I think, how much time do we have?
We have seven minutes.
We have seven minutes. So we, we wanna pose a question to them.
Yes.
Okay? Well, I mean, yes, it's not up here even. I'm, I'm just, you know, why is it imperative now that we work to understand and undo racism? What is the driving factor for us as social workers behind that? Why do we need to do it now? Why is it urgent, if you think it is? We wanna hear from you during these last seven minutes.
I just feel like we have the momentum right now and to take advantage and engage as many young youth. And I'm not just saying youth, but use that momentum of, she was saying, the next generation coming in to build on that and to create a further legacy, because that's where we're going.
Thank you. Others?
I just see a lot of anger right now and, and I think that should be moved into action.
Yes.
Why not now? Why not now?
Why wait?
We've waited too long. David?
I see the Trump candidacy bringing out the worst of the other side. And we need to counterbalance.
We need to counterbalance the worst of what we're seeing being brought out. What else? Yes.
For those of us who aren't a part of the oppressed group, I think we need to do a lot of listening as well. Especially as social workers, you know, we try to, you know, some of us talk a talk sometimes. But we need to do a lot of listening so that we can understand the whole, you know, the whole issue.
Thank you. Yes, others. Why is it urgent now? What is the primary reason that it is so urgent that we do it now? Yes.
I don't know if it's the primary reason, but I think that the populace right now, social media has brought to light, um, so many people don't have ever thought about racism before. Um, and that we need to capitalize on that, like one woman said, that momentum of, um, what's being exposed and use that to help educate and hopefully make society more.
Great. Thank you. Yes, over here. TJ?
I was thinking because people are dying.
Thank you. Thank you. People are dying because of racism. It's killing us every day. It's robbing us of our lives. It's robbing us of our humanity. It's taking away the dignity and respect that we ought to have for human life. Yes.
I think that if we understood, um, the impact racism has on all, all cultures, then I think that once we address that issue, we can unify and definitely for our future, for our younger generation.
Yes, yes. Yes, I, thank you. Others, right here.
We've been dying.
Yes, it's not new.
It's not a new phenomenon.
Right. It's exposed.
There's social media now.
Yeah.
They've been killing eleven-year-olds, thirteen-year-olds.
Right. That's right.
They've been killing minorities.
Yes.
Not just Latinos, but Black women.
That's right. That's right.
Say her name.
Yeah.
I mean, that's been going on, but now because of social media and technology, it's in our face nationally.
So how do we ignore it?
Nationally, it's globally now. We have warnings now overseas for visiting America, beware of the police because they're killing minorities and non, non-whites. So, you know, we, let's, I just to correct, you know.
Yeah, I appreciate that. It's not new.
This is not new.
It's not new.
Been, and if you are, if you are, um, of African-American descent heritage, uh, you got some in your kitchen in the back, you know what I'm saying? You know what has been going on in our community, in our people, even though the, the communities and, uh, the neighborhoods around us have, um, acted as if because we have famous, we have million-dollar football players and we have rappers now that are millionaires, then this does not exist. What are you talking about?
Yeah, and we really have to, as African-Americans and other persons of color, recognize and do the work that we have to do to realize that we have often blamed our own people for what has been happening. And so that's part of the work that we have to do is to, is to rid ourselves of the belief that it's all about what's wrong with us. It's the slave mentality. It is not new. It has come to light and we can no longer ignore it.
Sometimes you hear that justification is there's black on black crime. So, you know, why are you saying something? Because you're moving yourself.
Yes. I was challenged with that by a high-level official at Health and Human Services. When I tried to push institutional and structural racism conversation, I was asked, well, what about black on, black crime? And my response, which I credit to the People's Institute, was if every message that I have gotten from every system and institution is that I am worthless and inferior, then if you look like me, you too are worthless and inferior. And that's the work that I had to do was to heal and rid myself of my own internalized racial oppression and inferiority. So we have some raffles that we need to do, right?
Yes, yes. We're not gonna get out raffles during this session. We're actually gonna ask you to come to our table. We have visitors already to pick it up tomorrow morning because we're gonna text y'all, so we're gonna be up in the morning, okay? Um, but we have more time for one more question.
One minute, back here. And then here. Yes.
I'm not a social work profession. I'm actually one of the exhibitors and I'm glad to be at this session. But what I wanted to say is that whether you be in the profession or outside the profession, what you can do to exercise your power is to, as Susan Ray said, vote.
Vote. Yes, ma'am. Right, right here. Let's, let's just stay settled for just a minute, please. We're gonna, yes, right here.
I just wanted to bring up the racism against Hispanics because we do have a presidential candidate that does not like the Chinese. And he proved that by, by being discriminatory against the federal judge's parents who are from the United States. So, so we're talking about all discrimination against Hispanics.
Well, we need to know in Texas that it is racism that has caused Hispanics to go to bed in Mexico and wake up in Texas.
Yes, amen.
And that they didn't cross the border.
The border crossed us.
All right, all right. Thank you.